Today is Tuesday, September the twentieth. That's right. It's Tuesday, September the twentieth. This is our evening meeting here. That's right, it doesn't, but it is. It's September the twentieth. This is our evening meeting. Uh, we're on the brink of the transition from summer to fall. So, we're here at nine oh one Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers. We're calling our meeting to order. Today will be myself and Commissioner Washington. Commissioner Williams is away today, and it'll be myself and Commissioner Washington. I also want to take this opportunity to say to those that may want to speak during public comment, if you would, go ahead and get your red comment card, and if you have it already, and get, get it completed, and we'll make sure we give you an opportunity to do that at that time. So, I'm calling the meeting to order. Um, special recognitions or presentation.
We have none tonight.
It's gonna be smooth, none tonight.
No, no, none tonight.
Alright, well, that means we're going right into agenda review.
That is correct.
Alright.
So, Mr. Chairman, we'll start with item twenty twenty-two dash four zero two. This will be a combined item. It is actually the transmittal resolution for the capital improvements element for the twenty twenty-two annual update. There will be a brief public hearing next Tuesday during our board meeting at ten a.m. to go over this, this item in depth with our consultant, and we will open the floor for comment then and move on to the resolution.
Okay, alright, very good.
Could you briefly explain to everybody what a, the capital improvement, um, is? A lot of people may not know.
Sure, so annually, the capital improvements element plan has to be submitted to the Department of Community Affairs through the Planning Department. That the capital improvement fee is a fee that we impose upon development in the county, and that percentage of the development fee goes to fund things like libraries and parks and fire trucks and things of that nature, and every year it has to be looked at and updated and submitted. And so, that plan is currently out on our website for review. There'll be a brief public hearing Tuesday, and then it'll be submitted to the Department of Community Affairs through the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Washington, for asking for that clarification, because in our whole new spirit of making sure that we teach, inform, and educate, we want to make sure people do understand, when they hear all these different acronyms and these terms, they may not know all of what this stuff means, and sometimes it can be a little bit confusing. So, thank you, Commissioner Washington, for that, and thank you, Director Rutledge. Let's go to our next item, please.
Okay, so tonight, I'll start reading through the items, and if there's a question, I'll, I'll stop. Chief K will probably prompt me, because this is a five-page agenda.
Alright.
So, um, batter water, so. Okay, item four oh three is with the Atlanta Regional Commission through the Parks and Recreation Department, the Senior Services Division, for the Consolidated Appropriations Act grant for home-delivered meals. This is change order number one to contract twenty twenty-one dash one seventy-six. There's no change in funds. This is for a three-month extension through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Item four oh five is with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council through the Superior Court, the Accountability Courts. This is a grant to assist with housing for individuals who suffer with mental illness and or substance abuse disorder relating to legal involvement in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. The term was June first, twenty twenty-two, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and this is submitted for ratification. Item four oh six is with Marchman Consulting for the Superior Court through the Accountability Courts to provide a variety of services for multiple grants for program operations and evaluation services. This is change order number two to contract twenty twenty-one dash one thirteen to add additional duties and responsibilities for mental health and public safety grants. This is at no additional cost through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and this is a grant-funded expenditure.
Do we know how much the grant is for?
Director Lewis?
I do not know how much the CJC, CC grant is in totality, but I can find that out and give that to you.
And this is in addition to the consulting fee that we have with?
Commissioner, uh, it's actually a, it's grant-funded, but it's through other funds that have been received by the county in the past. Essentially, this change order basically changes the duties of the person that is performing the task.
Okay, thank you.
Are you good?
Alright, next item, please.
Okay, thank you. Item four oh seven is with Viewpoint Health through the Superior Court. This is for the behavioral health services for the courts. It's a unit price. The term is October first, twenty twenty-two, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and this is a grant-funded expenditure. Item four oh eight is with Southeastern Psychological Associates Incorporated. This is through the Superior Court for the behavioral health services for the, for the courts. This is a unit price. The term is October first, twenty twenty-two, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. This is a grant-funded expenditure. Item four oh nine is with the Truancy Intervention Project of Georgia through the Juvenile Court. This is for truancy intervention project grant in the amount of five thousand dollars. Item four ten is with Walter Nunley through the Juvenile Court and Accountability Courts for a certified peer specialist providing peer support services for the Accountability Courts program at twenty dollars per hour. This is for one year with option to renew two additional twelve-month periods, and this is a grant-funded expenditure. Item four eleven is with Paula Boyd through the Juvenile Court, Accountability Courts, for the peer specialist providing peer support services for the Accountability Courts program in the amount of twenty dollars per hour. This is for one year with option to renew two additional twelve-month periods. This is a grant-funded expenditure. Item four twelve is with Erin Natalie Askew for the Accountability Courts. This is for peer support specialists. This is change order number one to contract twenty twenty-one dash seventy. This is to increase the hourly rate to fifteen, from fifteen dollars per hour to twenty dollars per hour. This is to renew the contract term September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and this is a grant-funded expenditure. Item four thirteen is with Hydrocol LLC through the Water Resources Department for the water treatment plant. This is for purchase, delivery, and installation of chlorine analyzer in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars, and the service, the service time is two to three days. Item four fourteen is with Hydrocol LLC for the Water Resources Department for the water treatment plant. This is for the purchase, delivery, and installation of particle counters. It's in the amount of forty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty, three hundred and twenty dollars, and it's two to three days as well. Item four thirteen is with Inliner Solutions LLC through the Water Resources Department. This is for the annual sanitary sewer rehabilitation services, contract number, contract number one to contract twenty twenty-one dash one sixty-seven. This is for a name change and a price increase in the amount of four thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. The renew term is through October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Item four sixteen is with Inliner Solutions LLC through the Water Resources Department. This is for the annual sanitary sewer rehabilitation services. This is contract number two to contract twenty, change, I'm sorry, this is contract change order number two, the contract twenty twenty-one dash one sixty-seven. This is for additional funds in the amount of three million dollars due to aging infrastructure.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Right.
Director Peak.
Yeah, I think that at three million dollars, somebody might, it might behoove us for someone to explain exactly what the three million dollars is going from. Is it coming from the general fund? Is this, was this a budgeted item? All of those things, so that people.
Okay, first of all, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Director.
Okay, three million dollars, uh, pretty much is for the sewer rehab program that we have. Uh, recently, we have the SSES program, the Sanitary Sewer Evaluation Survey Program. What this program is doing is, uh, actually going out televising our sanitary sewer system, performing CCTV inspections, um, smoke testing, trying to figure out problems with the system, inflow and infiltration. Uh, this three million dollars is needed, because as we go out and we do these inspections, we find more problems with the system. Once we find more problems with the system, we have to repair the system. The reason we need to repair the system is to prevent sanitary sewer overflows and sanitary sewer spills.
So, is, is this outside of what was budgeted in the twenty twenty-two budget? Or is it, is, was it a budgeted?
This was part of the, uh, capital improvement program, so we just pretty much moving monies from the capital, uh, to go ahead and, you know, add money to this particular item to be able to take care of these issues we have in the field.
Okay. That's, until I think of something else.
Okay.
Well, I, I think it's interesting, and I think it's a good interesting that, uh, both Commissioner Washington and I both kind of perked up at that price point of three million dollars.
Well, we saw it, I saw it.
Uh, but I, I do appreciate Director Peak, who is our director, Director of Water Resources, uh, was able to educate us and explain to us that this investment is an investment to prevent bigger things from happening.
Absolutely.
Because if we don't do this type of maintenance, and, and the, he talked about the smoke test, he talked about the CCC TV, which is a, a telescopic unit that goes in, and they're able to look at the monitor and see what's happening with our infrastructure inside of the system. If we don't do these periodic tests as we move forward, we could ultimately have a major problem. Uh, when I was doing a deep dive on a Zoom call the other day about what's happening over in, uh, Jackson, Mississippi, um, for so many years, they've ignored, ignored, ignored. So, the issue, if you've heard some of the news reports, this issue, the problem that they're experiencing didn't just happen. Um, they've been receiving reports, and they've ignored it for time and time again. We have to make the investment. It's a sizable amount of money, and I, I totally agree with the inquiry from the Commissioner, because I was going to say something too.
Right.
But we appreciate the fact that we have to slow it down and teach, explain, uh, and educate all of our citizens as to why we're spending this kind of money. And I, I also appreciate your other part of your answer about, hey, this was part of the allocation for capital funding.
That's right.
But guess what? We had to go ahead and make a move on this so that we can be preventive and make sure that nothing happens. We've got an aging infrastructure here in Rockdale County. Let me just get that out clearly. Uh, we don't have a brand-new system here. Uh, that water and sewer system out there, and the plant has been there for many, many years. You can't have something, you can't buy something or build something in the eighties and the nineties and expect that it's going to last forever. We've got to maintain it and make sure it stays in place and that it's functional, and then at some point, guess what we have to do? We've got to build a new one.
We've got to build a new one.
It's just like buying a, a new car. The car you bought in the seventies and the eighties and the nineties, it may be still running, but it may not be able to get you as far as the car you need to go now. So, you got, you may hold on to that for sentimental reasons, but you got to go ahead and purchase another one, because you got a little bit for more traveling down the road to get to. So, this is a good, this is a good thing, and I appreciate the attention to detail from our Water Resources. But I really appreciate Commissioner your inquiry, because this level of education, I'm going to be talking about that all the time, because I think we have to, we're obligated to make sure the citizens of the county can understand where these dollars are being spent. That's important, so.
Don't sit down, because the next one is a half a million dollars, and I'm sure the inquiry minds are going to want to know about that.
Okay. So, we'll follow protocol with Director Rutledge, and then we'll come back to you, Director Peak, as you're standing tall there.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may, before Director Rutledge goes for the, uh, just for clarity to answer an additional question that Commissioner Washington had, this is funded through the enterprise fund, so it's not the general fund, if you want to confirm.
That's right.
Uh, I know you've had meetings with Director Lewis.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Absolute, very good clarification. Thank you, Chief. Alright, next item, please.
Thank you. Alright. Item four seventeen is with RDJE Incorporated through the Water Resources Department. This is for the Fieldstone Pump Station Elimination in the amount of four hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, and the amount of time is a hundred and fifty days from notice to proceed.
Okay.
So, you had a question, Commissioner?
Okay, you, you want, okay.
Go ahead and give me a switch.
Okay, um, pretty much, this is the, uh, okay.
The Fieldstone Pump Station Elimination?
Right, I had to, I had to catch you back up on, uh, back on my form again. But pretty much, uh, we, we have a project going on out there, Salem Road Street Widening Project is happening out there, so we're going to eliminate this pump station.
What kind of, what's happening out there? Say it again clearly.
Salem Road Street Widening.
Salem Road Street Widening. Yes, sir. That way they can hear what you're saying, Director.
We actually widening, widening the roadway.
Yes, sir.
So, we have to move our sanitary sewer infrastructure. Uh, in the process of moving this infrastructure, we're going to, um, eliminate the pump station, and we're going to have, we're going to install a gravity flow sewer system.
But what kind of?
Gravity flow sewer system.
Gravity flow?
Natural flow.
A, a natural flow sewer system. Uh, right now, that sewer is being pumped, um, to its location. We're going to install a gravity flow system where it moves by gravity.
Is that the latest and greatest technology in sewer?
No, 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 ma'am. Um, most of sewer system is gravity flow. Uh, some systems are, uh, force main pump systems, and the purpose of that is, if it, if it doesn't have a fall and an appropriate fall that it needs to be able to push its way out, it's being forced out through a pumping system.
So, this gravity flow is better than?
Well, well, gravity, gravity flow is, well, you, we, we can say gravity flow is better, because you don't have a pump. You know, you don't have to maintain that pump. Uh, gravity flow is just pushed out naturally, uh, you know, through gravity, so it is a better system. It is a better system.
And, and, um, good question, Commissioner Washington. Uh, in this particular instance, only because I know about this pump at Fieldstone.
Okay.
This would have been a good graphic to put up on the screen, because people need to see how old, how, they wouldn't believe that we still have a pump like this in Rockdale. Kind of see some heads shaking back there, because I know Charlotte is very familiar with this pump. If you get a chance to ride out with Director Peak out on, uh, Salem Road going towards south part where Fieldstone is, he'll take you to this pump, and it'll blow your mind. I, I wish you had a picture to show this one, because.
Can we have a picture on Tuesday?
A picture, we'll definitely, we'll have a picture.
Absolutely, you, you get a picture of that.
Absolutely.
And I think, I don't think you should just start with a picture of this one.
Okay.
I, I think it's important that, that, that you tell the story.
Okay.
Okay?
We'll take a picture of that.
Let's tell the story.
And I'm going to prop that up, Chairman, it is, it is an old pump station.
There's a story to be told.
Right.
So, let's tell the story.
And I'm pretty much picking up the history.
I think it's going to blow, it's going to blow a lot of people's mind when they see what we've been operating with for quite some time. Absolutely. And, and I'm going to step out there, because I'm not an engineer, but I will tell you, based upon what we have and what the Director is talking about, gravity flow in this particular instance is a whole lot better.
Okay. Thank you for that, Chairman. Absolutely.
Next item, please.
Alright, item four eighteen is with Computer Software Incorporated through the Water Resources Department. This is for the software services agreement. This is contract change order number five to contract twenty twenty dash thirty to add additional module for the Magnet Software Customer Portal and Inspections Module Upgrade, and this is an additional thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Item four nineteen is with the Department of Natural Resources through the General Services Department. This is for the Acceptance of Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant for the DeCastro Trailhead Nature Center and Pavilion and the Resolution Approval in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Do you want to talk about exactly what that is, where it is?
Uh, yes, you could inquire about that, absolutely. So, Director Rutledge, I know you have a lot of back knowledge on this one, but I think, Commissioner, you want to pose your inquiry?
Director Sanders could take this one, yes, thanks. Unless we want a history lesson of the DeCastro property.
Only the old timers.
Right. Hey now.
Good evening. Um, this is a contract to accept a grant with, um, Department of Natural Resources in conjunction with Parks and Recreation, uh, for a facility out at the DeCastro Trailhead.
Director, would you lean toward the mic, so the, our audience can hear you? Uh, they're, they're straining to hear, they can't.
This has been, um, in the works for quite some time. The grant had been stalled, and now we've been given the go-ahead to proceed. So, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand in grant and a match from SPOLOST for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's on the approved SPOLOST list, and, um, the property was actually donated from the, the, the Castro family for this, um, use as a nature center and pavilion, and there'll be displays, a restroom, and it's located about halfway between South Rockdale Park and the DeCastro Trailhead. Any other questions?
And Commissioner, you're familiar with this location?
Yes.
Right. You just wanted to make sure people understood it. I got you.
Okay.
Thank you, Director. Thank you so much. Alright, very good.
Alright, thank you. Item four twenty is up with a floor creation LLC through the General Services Department for floor covering for various county locations. It's a unit price contract for two years with option to renew two additional one-year periods.
So, I want to make sure that, um, when we do something like a two-year period, it wouldn't have anything to do with other projects like the courthouse, like we would be able to still bid out flooring for the courthouse or something like that, once we...
That's correct. So, this is for, um, unit prices for when we're doing small renovations, the courthouse would be bid out as a full project, so we wouldn't bid out flooring and drywall separately. That makes sense? Yes.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Item four twenty-one is with Motorola Solutions through the General Services Department. This is for equipment for the new nine-one-one communications center in the amount of two million five hundred five thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-nine cents. This is for one year, and this is a SPOLOST-funded expenditure. Item four twenty-two is with Beatty Construction LLC through the General Services Department. This is for small contract work, framing, drywall, and ACT work. This is one of three recommended awardees for on-call unit price. This is for one year with option to renew two additional one-year periods. Item four twenty-three is with Jerry J. Johnson and Associates Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is for small contract work, framing, drywall, and ACT work. This is the two of three recommended awardees for the on-call unit price for one year with option to renew two additional one-year periods, and the other vendor is Laz and Associates LLC, also through the General Services Department, and this is the third of the recommended awardees. Item four twenty-five is with United Signs LLC through the General Services Department. This is for monument signs for various county locations. This is a unit price contract. Current signs needed in the amount of forty thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars. This is for one year with option to renew two additional twelve-month periods.
So, I'm going to, uh, thank you, Director. I want to jump in there, I'll ask, uh, Director Sanders to just kind of explain to us when we talk about monument signs for various counties' locations, give us an idea of what these types of signs we're talking about.
Uh, the, the signs look like the, right out front here, um, they look like a monument.
Like the one in front of the Assembly Hall and the auditorium?
Assembly Hall and Auditorium, yes.
That's a monument sign.
Yes, it's a monument sign, and they're in front of the fire stations. Each new facility, um, we obtain a sign. The one in front of the Elections Building will actually have a marquee, which is why that's different, so that they can actually announce, um, dates and, um, put those things on there. So, this is just, um, this one is for two signs, but we have the ability with this bid to actually add signs as we build fire stations and other facilities.
Okay, alright, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four twenty-six is with American Facilities, American Facility Services Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is for general janitorial and custodians, custodial services at various county locations. This is a unit price contract. It's change order number one to contract twenty twenty dash ninety-one to add JP Car Community Center as an additional site. This is for five days per week at an additional one thousand one hundred dollars per month. Item four twenty-seven is with ArboServe, ArborServe Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is for the grinding of bulk piles of trees and yard debris. This is an on- This is an on-call unit price contract, one year with option to renew two additional one-year periods. Item 428 is with Burgess Events and Amusements through the Talent Management Department. This is for Employee Appreciation and Benefits Fair. The cost is covered with wellness funds by Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. The term of the day was September 17th, 2022, and this is wellness funds. Item 429 is with Schi, is with Snyder Geospatial LLC doing business as Q Public for the Board of Assessors Office. This is Change Order Number Two to the First Amendment to Contract 2014-157. This is to add an update to provide document access report module and a property tax dollars module. Year one is in the amount of $336 for November 2022 and December 2022. And year two is in the amount of $2,016 for January 2023 through December 2023. It's for one year with annual renewals. Item 430 is with the Tax Management Associates Incorporated through the Board of Assessors Office. This is for personal property tax audit. It's fees based on the accounts. The term is one year with option to renew four additional one-year periods. Item 431 is through the Georgia Department of Transportation through the RDOT Department. This is for the right-of-way acknowledgement forms for Honey Creek Road at Snapping, at Snapping Shoals Creek, and this is submitted for ratification. Item 432 is with CHA Consulting through the Transportation Department for the Farmer Road at Lakeview Estates Roadway Design. This is Change Order Number Six to Contract 2018-186 to add additional design services. The additional cost is $23,400 and this is SPOST-funded. Item 433 is with Ahead Incorporated through the Technology Services Department for security software platform in the amount of $180,000. $60,000 will be due in 2022, and this is for two years. Item 434 is with Blue Alley Technology Service, Technology Solutions LLC through the Technology Services Department. This is for the backup storage for data protection and retention in the amount of $226,249.18, and this is for 60 months. This is host-funded. Item 435 is with Woolpert Incorporated doing business as Data Cloud Solutions for Technology Services. This is for the Camma Cloud Software Solution and Implementation for the Board of Assessors in the amount of $36,458.34. It, the term is December 31st, 2028, and it automatically renews unless terminated. This is also host-funded. Item 436 is with Kanji Incorporated through the Technology Services Department. This is for the Mobile Device Management Software in the amount of $14,391. The subscription is for one year and auto-renews the bills annually unless terminated.
Thank you, Director. I want to just pause for a moment. I'm gonna ask that Director Moore Jackson make her way to the podium. And Director Moore Jackson is our Technology Services Director. Uh, we've had a, a, several items on the agenda of this evening, Director Moore Jackson. I just want you to give us a very brief overview of what's happening now in your department as relate for all of these items to be on the agenda. Some of these impact the Tax Commissioner, Tax Assessors, other departments, as well as your infrastructure and what you're doing. Talk to us about, educate us about what's happening with Technology Services and why it's so important that we put these provisions in place.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, Commissioner. For the items that we have listed here, for example, the, uh, item, Agenda Item Number 433, that's listed as Verona's, as Ahead Incorporated. Basically, this particular software application assisted Technology Service Department in establishing an all-in-one cybersecurity platform where we will use it to help protect our active directory. And basically, that's all of the accounts within the, um, network for all of the employees working within Rockdale County and all of our network shares and then our Microsoft 365 accounts also. And this will also assist us in classifying our data, such as sensitive data. And then it also will show us when there is a risk, what, where the risk is in the network. If there's over a thousand end users in the network, if there's a risk, it saves us time if there's a software application that actually says it's on this particular device, this endpoint, and it points us straight to us in order for us to expedite, expedite the remedy in order to fix whatever the, um, the threat to the network is for just one of them.
Otherwise, we stand the risk of it spreading and contaminating other systems.
Correct. Because if, the longer it takes us to identify which system is infected, it can spread from system to system. And if we're steadily looking for it, then before long, the entire network is infected. And then another one, uh, the next one, for example, is, uh, Blue Ally, and that kind of goes, 434 and 435, um, kind of go together. Because 435 is actually the, um, the Data Cloud Solutions, the, through the Board of Assessors. This Camma Cloud Software Solution will actually enable the mobile assessments on the tablets for the field appraisers.
Okay.
And working with them and, and also a couple of other capital improvement projects that are in the process of being approved by the Board of Commissioners. That takes us to Item 434, the reason why it's needed. Basically, 434 is giving additional backup storage space on the network in order to run certain programs. The network has to have the storage space for the programs to run. And also for the employees' work throughout the county to actually be backed up to the dat, to the network.
Makes sense.
And the last item there, Item Number 436, our Mobile Device Management Software. The county probably has around 400 cell phones. This software enables the Technology Services Department to do a more efficient job of tracking all of these mobile devices. And that's just the cell phones. That doesn't make ref, that doesn't, um, include, that number does not include all of the iPads and all the other mobile devices that are moving throughout the county. This helps us to tighten up the, um, inventory in order for, enable the county to be better stewards of the taxpayers' dollars.
Much more efficient.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Director Moore Jackson, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna continue to be doing this periodically as we move forward. I think just having our directors here, uh, it adds value when they can explain what's happening, teach, educate, and inform us as to what's going on and how we're spending taxpayers' dollars. And people can really understand, again, all of these acronyms and all of these phrases, that, they're oblivious to the average person, particularly the laypeople. They don't know. But when you break it down, when you slow down and you teach and explain, we're going to be in this mode as we move through the rest of this year. And we're excited about some of the, uh, activities and programs we have outlined for 2023 to exclusively zoom in on informing and educating our citizenry about how tax dollars are spent, but more importantly, how the government operates. Absolutely. Next item, please.
All right, thank you. Item 437 is with Ross and Associates through the Planning and Development Department. This is for the 2022 Annual Capital Improvement Element Update for the, for FY 2022 in the amount of $5,124. And it's for six months. It's what we had discussed earlier about the public hearing and the resolution.
Absolutely.
Item 438 is with Aramart Correctional Services LLC through the Sheriff's Office. This is for the food service at the jail. It's Contract Number Five, Contract Change Order Number Five to Contract 2017-112. This is a unit price at two-month increase to extend the term through September 1st, I mean, I'm sorry, through, to extend the term two months, which would be September 1st, 2022 through October 31st, 2022. Item 439 is with ACCG Local Government Risk Management Services. This is for the Rockdale County EMA Department. For the 2022 Employee Safety Grant to be used to purchase six AEDs, cabinets, and signage for the county offices in the amount of $9,972. This is a single-year grant award and is submitted for ratification.
Thank you so much. Director Morgan, if you would just come shed a little light on that and the importance of these AEDs throughout county facilities.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, this is a great grant that is offered through our insurance liability provider, a AC, a, a.
It's a tongue twister, isn't it?
Yes. ACCG, okay. Um, and it is the Employee Safety Grant, which is up to $10,000. And you can see we spent almost every penny of it. We get, uh, six AEDs. Uh, we get to choose the subject matter of our grant. This is the second year we have bought six AEDs, and every year, we're just increasing our footprint of having, providing safety for cardiac events of the people who visit our facilities and our employees in our county facilities. And having an AED on-site that you can get to somebody within the first two to four minutes of an event greatly improves the cardiac output of that event. So, um, it's just having more safety features readily at our fingertips. We're also increasing the amount of CPR training we're giving our, our employees to be able to use these devices. So it's part of a long-term project to try to have one as many places as we can.
Absolutely. Does this building have one?
Yes, this one, this building has three. One on every floor.
Where, where they located? What about this meeting room? Does it have one?
It's on the second floor next to the elevator. It's, it's actually in the elevator, beside the elevator doors, first, second, and third floors, so people know where they are.
Okay, well, let me just tell you, that's a little concerning, because if somebody's having a heart attack in here, and somebody's gotta run all the way down there to get there. I, I know, well, this just, this would say, this would be the day that Chief Mack and Chief Webb is not here. I think we need to have one in this Assembly Hall. Uh, you, you, say that again, Commissioner?
I have you.
You have one?
Yes, um, you know, I have a fired person who does training in my house, and she has trained me on how to give CPR.
Okay. Well, so here's what I'm talking about. I, I'm, if, let's consider putting one in the, um, Assembly Hall, somewhere either in the foyer out there or somewhere in this part of the space where we have general public and people show up, you know? If we have an incident in this room, this meeting room, we don't have to move and run and count on Commissioner Washington and all the people she's talking about. Or if Chief Mack or Chief Webb are not here, or if you're not here, uh, you know? So I, let's just, you've got six that are coming, six more that are coming. You've got some creative places to put them. You're trying to saturate the county facilities. Let's consider 901 Main Street.
We can, we can do that. We can rotate that, and I can save one of those other locations for next year.
All right.
All right.
Very good. Very good. All right, thank you. Next item, please.
All right. Item 440 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for SE Diving Services, Four Diving Services, in the amount of $67,721.42, and this is submitted for ratification.
And Director Rutledge, I was gonna ask, when Director Morgan was up. Take a moment and tell us who ACCG is. What does that stand for?
It stands for the Association County Commissions of Georgia.
And what do they really do?
They represent all 159 counties in the state of Georgia, whether it's, um, insurance or policy advocacy, legislation, um, education, uh, for, there's so many things that county commissioners and their staff need to be aware of, and they're our, our advocate and our educator.
Outstanding. Next item, please.
All right. Item 441 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Salem Water Solutions USA for the repair of the large pump at the old Salem Pump Station in the amount of $28,941.42.
You see why I wanted that picture, Director Peak? Uh, she said for the repair of the large pump at the old Salem Pump Station. So when you bring in, as the Commissioner has requested, when you bring in a series of photos all around the county, uh, you, you bring, bring them in, because I think it's important that people see what we're relying on. Okay? Next item, please.
Item 442 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for SERM Corporate Environmental Risk Management for the Staff Argumentation Support for 2022. This is Change Order Number One for Development Inspections in the amount of $450,000. Item 443 is a requis.
She just kind of grunted. She didn't say anything. She's just kind of grunted up here. She didn't say anything, so we're gonna just go. We're gonna go past that grunt. Keep it going. Next item, please.
All right.
Grunts don't count. You gotta speak up.
The next one is, is an even bigger grunt.
Well, you gonna speak up or grunt?
Well, we gonna speak up.
Next item.
Okay. Item 443 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for SERM Corporate Environmental Risk Management for Staff Augmentation Support for 2022. It's Change Order Number One for Sewer Rehabilitation in the amount of $800,000.
Okay. So we might as well do both of them.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Director Peak, Water Resources.
Okay, we'll back up. Uh, this particular item is, uh, pretty much still part of the sewer rehab that we talked about earlier. Uh, SERM is assisting. Right now, SERM has, uh, assisted us with inspectors. We have inspectors. We have engineers. Uh, and the purpose of these inspectors and engineers, we need somebody to look over the work that's being done in the field from our vendors that's doing the sewer rehab for us. So we have engineers to go out. They look over, they, 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 they watch this work that's being performed, uh, by the vendors. Uh, they also assist with the smoke testing, um, during the SSES on the system. So that is the purpose of, uh, of us having SERM, you know, to assist with this, uh, particular project.
So this is part of that spirit of, Commissioner, you heard us talk about inspect what you expect. And to have enough staff availability, available to be able to go out into the field and make sure that all the vendors that we've contracted with, they're doing the work that we need them to do the correct way on behalf of Rockdale County. We've got somebody to check the checker and make sure, kind of reminds me of that episode of Good Times when they were inside the retail department and the guy, it had to be checking balance. Somebody was watching the checker who was checking the checker. That's what this is.
Absolutely.
And it costs for all of that. So you gotta have some check and balance. You have to inspect what you expect. And in order to have a good inspector, you gotta pay for it.
That's right.
All right, so.
Well, not only that, when we, when we, um, first of all, I know SERM, and I know that they are an excellent company. Um, but when we, when we, um, contract out like this, it saves us money because we don't have to have them on our insurance. We don't have to pay all the benefits, and we get the, the, uh, ability to know, we know the company of SERM and the quality that they have.
Absolutely.
So it's, it's like a two-for. We're saving on benefits and things like that, but we're also getting the, the, um, the benefit of having a company like SERM that is doing the work, so.
Okay.
I get it.
All right. All right. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Commissioner. Next item, please.
Okay. Item 444 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for McNauton McKay Electric Company upgrading the CP15 Filter Building at the Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $73,792.07. Item 445 is with the, is a requisition for the Water Resources Department through Woolpert. This is a fee for flow monitoring for 17 locations and five tasks within the Snapping Shoals Basin for a three-month duration in the amount of $97,300. Item 446 is a requisition through the Stormwater Management Department for IPR Southeast LLC. This is for the trenchless rehabilitation process to replace the compromised damaged pipe via the use of liquid liner in the amount of $600,000. Item 447 is a requisition through the Stormwater Management Department for Goldr and Associates for post-construction monitoring and engineering services for the Lakefield Dam Rehabilitation in the amount of $22,000. Item 448 is a requisition through the Parks and Recreation Department through the Senior Services Division for Claris Healthcare for the Claris Companion Products in the amount of $28,494. This is an ARPA-funded expenditure.
Can we, can we have a?
Director Redman, come on up, sir. Tell us a little bit about this, when this covered under ARPA fund, but give us a little understanding of it.
Good evening. How you guys doing?
Good evening. Oh, happy birthday.
Thank you. I appreciate it. This, uh, this, um, item was for the Claris Companion Product requisition, and this is support the technology project that is being used with the senior services. It was started with CARES funding and is being continued with senior services, the ARPA-assisted program. And the purpose is to provide the tools and accessibility to seniors so that, uh, those who are at risk for isolation and/or loneliness have a, an, a, a item, a technology item that will help kind of ease that discomfort for them a little bit. So again, it's ARPA-funded.
So what kind of technology item?
It is a, it's, it's somewhat of an iPad, but it's an easier tool to navigate. It's not as complicated and you got to flip up, it's more buttons. It's, it's more user-friendly for the senior community.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
So is that the reason why I'm starting to see Ms. Jenkins on Facebook more often?
That could be why. She has access to that, too.
She's been lacking a lot of stuff, so I knew something had to happen. She's, she's got technology inclined. Go Ms. Jenkins. Okay, next item, please.
Item 449 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for the Instrument House. This is for AED Zoll Plus with Kerry Case for new vehicles in the amount of $21,922.04. This is SPLAS-funded. Item 450 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for Motorola Solutions. This is for dash mount, mobile radios with accessories in the amount of $19,046.96. This is SPLAS-funded. Item 451 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for Wade Ford. This is for four 2023 Ford Inceptor Pursuit Vehicles in the amount of $181,277. This is SPLAS-funded. Item 452 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for Wade Ford for four 2023 Ford EchoBoost Pursuit Vehicles in the amount of $194,400, and this is SPLAS-funded. Item 453 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for Hardy Chevrolet. This is for six 2023 Chevy Tahoe Vehicles in the amount of $246,468. This is SPLAS-funded.
Are these, are we starting the, the, um, procedure? Were we rolling off vehicles? Would these be in that? You know what I'm talking about?
Well, come on up, Director. In the meantime, I was just going to say, just keep in mind that the SPLAS fund, the SPLAS allocation that comes through from Public Safety, from the SPLAS Committee, awards, Fire, 911, and the Sheriff's Office, a certain amount of funds to be able to take care of some of the expenditure. Director Sanders can probably explain it a lot better.
These are actually off of state contract. They are not, um, the fleet replacement plan has not been approved by the board as of yet, but the Sheriff's Office is not included in the first phase of that because their vehicles have specialized equipment. So the vehicles that we're looking at are like your basic passenger vehicles that are going around town. So they are not included, but we could look at it down the road. But this is actually state contract with SPLAS funds.
Okay.
All right. Item 454 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for Axon Enterprises. This is for the Axon Camera System in the amount of $28,327, and this is SPLAS-funded. Item 455 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Russ Bassett for HGAC by contract for the new 911 Center Dispatch Console Furniture in the amount of $233,603.60. This is SPLAS-funded. Item 456 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Parsons Roofing. This is roof repair at Johnson Park Old Gym and at Johnson Park Office in the amount of $166,024.66. This is submitted for ratification.
I'll call Director Redman up to kind of explain to us what happened to that roof over at Johnson Park.
Thank you, sir. So about, I think, two months ago, we had a storm that come through in, um, some kind of way, as the wind blew, it grabbed the edge of the building and almost like peeled it like a can. It ripped the roof all the way off, so as it rained overnight, the water seeped all the way into the gymnasium and, um, damaged the gym floor very bad, where we have to replace the floor. So, uh, the roof has to be replaced. It also damaged the area that sits over the aqua, the, uh, natatorium as well. So rainwater got inside the building in those two areas.
What is the age of the old gym, the gym that we're talking about? You have any idea, maybe between you and Director Sanders?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-four. Yeah, and that's the original.
1994. Okay. So it lasted that long?
I think it passed its lifespan, yes.
Okay, Mother Nature came through and was a little upset that night.
She was.
Okay. All right, okay. Well, that explains it. That explains it. Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
This, uh, expense was covered through our insurance claim.
That's correct. That's correct. And, and, and I thank you, Chief, for pointing that out, because, um, with our insurance policy, these kind of things, you know, can't control Mother Nature. Absolutely. Very good. Okay. All right. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 457 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Southeastern Services and Equipment. This is for the new floor at Johnson Park Old Gym due to the severe weather event just described in the amount of $184,000, $184,334, and also submitted for ratification. Item 458 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Pratt Recycling. This is for the solid waste haul and tonnage charges, add, and add an additional $120,000. Item 459 is, is a requisition through the General Services Department for Imperial Dade. This is for additional janitorial supplies for Rockdale County in the amount of $14,800. Item 460 is a requisition through Transportation Department for BM&amp;K for the CEI Services for Sigmund Road Phase Two widening and the multi-use trail from east of Lester Road to Irwin Bridge Road construction project in the amount of $91,796.71. This is SPLAS-funded. Item 461 is an expenditure request for Quicket Solutions through the Technology Services Department. This is the annual subscription software for code enforcement and the court system in the amount of $55,630. Item 462 is an expenditure request through ACCG in Irma. This is through the Finance Department for the Property and Liability Insurance Renewal Premium in the amount of $986,597, and this is submitted for ratification.
So Director Lewis, take a moment and explain to, uh, explain to us item 462, please.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening.
Um, so we just had the two items from the Park Services that was reimbursement for property, reimbursement for damages to our property.
That's correct.
And this is actually payment for our property and liability insurance through ACCG. Through ACCG, we're able to pool together resources throughout all of Georgia in order to get a more efficient pricing on our property and liability insurance.
So the market term is they bundle. We're part of a bundle, and we get a lower price.
That is correct.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Director. Next item, please.
All right. Item 463 is an expenditure request through the DeKalb County Revenue and License Administration for the Water Resources Department for Sewage Treatment for June 2022 in the amount of
So, uh, uh, once again, I want to call Director Pete going up here because I want to, you to explain this relationship between Rockdale and DeKalb, and talk about, uh, over the Mall Parkway and Iris Drive and this whole connection here that drives all the way through and while we're in this agreement with DeKalb County.
Okay, currently, um, I'm sorry, currently, uh, Rockdale do have an agreement with the DeKalb County Sewer Department, and this agreement allows us to be able to send sewage to their treatment facility. Some parts of town here in Rockdale County, we don't have a sewer system or we don't have a treatment facility. Due to us not having a treatment facility, this sewage has to be treated, so we enter an agreement with the DeKalb County to be able to send flows to their treatment facility.
Do we know how long the agreement is for?
I don't know how long the agreement is for, uh, now.
Uh, and if I may, Commissioner, the agreement, the agreement typically is a two-year term, and we are currently in the middle of that agreement, and it's paid monthly based on the amount of, uh-
Sew, sewage that flows to the DeKalb County.
Yeah.
The amount of gallons that-
Right.
We might as well, we're gonna have pictures of pump stations.
Now, you could've said it in a different way, Director. I mean, just kind of the way that you said that.
The amount of gallons that we send over to the DeKalb County Treatment Facility.
But let's load out, because I think it's important to know that this agreement has been in place for quite some time.
It has.
And we're talking about particularly the portion of Rockdale County there at Sigmund Road and I-20, the Abbott Ridge area, that area, the Mall Parkway, Iris Drive area, particularly that particular area, which also includes Covington Highway as well. That goes into DeKalb County. There's no polished-up way, Commissioner, to talk about sewage amount and, and, and the flow, but we don't have the necessary, um, uh, mechanical equipment in place to be able to carry it. They do, and they're right there on our county line, and it allows us to be able to do that, and we have to pay for it. That's nothing unusual, because, uh, that happens with counties and municipalities all across the place, where we enter into IGAs or Memorandum of Understanding where we have to support each other with these different, because Rockdale, we're not called Rockdale for nothing, because we have a lot of rock. Some places, we can't even run any type of sewer, because you can't get through there, and we have to enter into these types of agreements. Is that somewhat on point, Director Pete?
That's right. Absolutely.
I just want, want people to see how much that actually costs, because if you're looking at, uh, one month in July, it was almost $90,000 for that month, and then June was another $85,000. If you multiply that out by 12, that's a lot of money that's coming, is this coming from the enterprise fund or the general fund?
It's coming from the enterprise fund.
Okay, but people still need to see-
Right.
-that, you know, this is part of their water and sewer bill. We got to pay for these kinds of services, so I want, you know, the whole point of this is so that people can start seeing where that money is going, why we have to have, um, we have to have money to be able to pay the DeKalb County, because we don't want to keep this, uh, gallons.
Right. Not just that we don't want to keep it, honestly, we can't keep it. And if we did have a place to put this, we'd have a standing room full of people, because there'd be a backup. And that kind of backup is what folks don't want in Rockdale County. So, so I think it's important that as we have entered into agreement with the DeKalb, as with other counties on different items, that we continue, continue to keep those type of agreements, because we need them on this, and they need us on other things. And that's, that's all a part of having those relationships. But to the Commissioner's point, there's a cost involved, and, and people need to understand, she was just breaking it down by a monthly cost, but think about all the people that live in Rockdale County on that side of the county, split between I-20, between Covington Highway and Iris Drive and Mall Parkway, that whole Turner Hill, uh, Turner Road area, the whole McDaniel Mill Road area. This is very important to those people flushing, washing, and using whatever, uh, in terms of getting this system going through. So thank goodness for them, it's a lot of money, because this stuff costs. So I'll leave it there. Absolutely. But thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Director.
Mr. Chairman, if I also put into perspective, for that particular month was 1.91 million gallons that was pumped to DeKalb for treatment. And that was just from one little corner pocket of the community.
Just, just a certain corner pocket of, that's not even Rockdale County, because we don't send all our stuff there. That's just a corner of the community right there. That's a lot of gallons.
That was July, 1.9?
Yes, ma'am, just for that month. Yes.
All right. Okay, good education, good education. Next item, please.
Item 464 is an expenditure request to the DeKalb County Revenue and License Administration through the Water Resources Department. This is for the sewage treatment for July 2022 in the amount of $89,982.07. Item 465 is an expenditure request to Envelopes and Forms Incorporated, also known as Sure Bill, through the Tax Commissioner's Office. This is for the tax mailing for $37,500 mailings in the amount of $19,612.50, and this is submitted for ratification. Item 466 is a list of surplus equipment from the District Attorney's Office and from the General Services Department. Item 467 is a resolution for Safe Streets and Roads Grant Program submitted through RDOT, and this is submitted for ratification. Item 468 is a Rockdale County Policy Amendment for the Disposal of Dead Animals, Decomposed Animals, and Roadkill on the County Rights of Way to amend Rockdale County Policy 1998-3-1 as amended.
What does that policy say?
Who's turn it is to pick it up?
Uh, what department that falls under? Transportation, right? The, our, Rockdale Department of Transportation. Come on up, Director. Yes, sir. Come on up. Yes, sir. All right. And hang in there. See how you moving? Just hang on in there. Tell us about, tell them about this roadkill and picking up these dead animals.
So, good evening, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Historically, this, uh, the roadkill, anything you would see would be done by RDOT. We had a, a CIT team that would take care of that. There was a transition-
A community improvement team.
Community improvement team. There was a transition of that staff and all the equipment that was necessary for everything that they do, but the amendment was to change the policy from their old team, which was RDOT, to the new group, which was, uh, code enforcement. So that's what that-
So who is responsible?
So that's under planning and, 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 and development, and the CIT team went to that, to that, to that group.
Okay, so who's picking up the roadkill?
So the roadkill, uh, that's, that's our, our community improvement team.
Okay. That's why I needed you to get out. That's why you standing there, because we want to find out who's responsible picking up the roadkill. So the community improvement team does that. Chief, tell me what you know about this.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So, um, for many years, uh, staff from the Rockdale Department of Transportation have had the responsibility of going out, responding to citizen concerns, and picking up dead animal carcasses, either that are in the roadway or in the county right-of-way. And essentially, what transpires from that is they collect these carcasses, and then we don't have anywhere within Rockdale County to dispose of them. So then, uh, in the spirit of transparency and showing where the funds go, RDOT used to have a line item in their budget that would be allocated for the disposal of those animals, and essentially, they are transported into DeKalb County where they have an animal incinerator, and that's where the animals are disposed. So essentially, this policy transfers the responsibility from RDOT's responsibilities over to planning and development, because the community improvement team now operates under planning and development.
Chief, I really appreciate you and Director Kelly giving that education. We're getting ready to enter into the deer season, uh, but not just limited to the deer. There's all kind of roadkill and carcasses that you'll see out and about in the road. When Ms. Jenkins calls the BOC office and she reports that an animal is out in front of her house, we need to be able to know which division to dispatch to pick it up. And I think it was important that you explained that we don't have an animal incinerator here to, to handle those carcasses. Now, sometimes y'all know that some of these animals are in the, dead in the middle of the road. They got, they got to go. We got to get them out of the road, because they're obscuring traffic. We have to remove them. So having the folks on this community improvement team, and sometimes these things happen through the night and the early wee hours of the morning, and we have to be able to dispatch somebody to remove these carcasses or these dead animals, roadkill, whatever you want to call it, out of the roadway as to not to, uh, cause a problem with traffic. Having this agreement, uh, again, to what you were saying, Commissioner, it explains to folks how this is done. But now, I needed to know, because I needed to be clear. I just knew that every time we called on, uh, I called you, you got, you got it removed. I didn't actually know which division within your department took care of it. Community Improvement Team, CIT. All right. Thank you so much, Director. That's, that's a great point of clarity there. Absolutely.
Just one more thing that Chief wanted.
And Mr. Chairman, this policy-
You still on roadkill?
Uh, well, we, we just, for the record, we just need to state that the, the actual effective date would be October 1st of the new policy change.
Right in time for, for the season. Okay. All right, unfortunately.
All right. Sewer and animals.
I'm sorry, Director.
Sewer and animals.
Dead animals.
All right. So, we're almost there, y'all. We can hang in there. Okay. Item 469 is the list of alcoholic beverage licenses requests. Item 470 is a Rockdale County Employee Classification and Pay Plan Amendments. Item 471 is a Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Conyers and Rockdale County for the Installation and Use of Public Safety Cameras.
Chief, you want to talk about that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This is an agreement with the City of Conyers Police Department for the use of public safety cameras for citizens that may not be aware. The police department in the city, uh, has been operating public safety cameras for many years, and they are monitored by the, the 911 center within the city, um, Communication Center. They are in the process of adding additional cameras and coverage area to Old Town, and And essentially this agreement allows them to, um, attach and install, uh, said cameras to county-owned buildings.
Outstanding, outstanding. Big brother's watching and if you doing something in the city limits that you ain't got no business doing, you subject to be caught on camera. So I, I like that. And if the bad guy is, is moving and shaking through the city limits, they can zoom in on his license and picture of the vehicle and, and, and hopefully they can catch that joker.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add also, um, this, this is no expense to Rockdale County. Uh, this is an expense that the City of Conyers has covered completely. And, and also it provides enhanced security, not only to the Old Town area, but also to our courthouse and government complex as well.
Very good, I like that, very good. We're living in a different world now, Commissioner, absolutely. Next item, please.
Item four seventy-two is with Bell South Telecommunications LLC, doing business as AT&amp;T Georgia through the General Services Department. This is for AT&amp;T equipment for the new nine-one-one dispatch center, the new primary site in Node B in the amount of three hundred sixteen thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars. This is SPLAS plus, SPLAS funded plus four thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars monthly. Single purchase with sixty-month maintenance agreement on the equipment.
That was a mouthful.
Yes, it was.
Okay, all right. Well, Commissioner Washington, we went through the agenda review. I think we had several good points of education and information there. Director Rutledge, where, that brings us back to.
Public comment.
To public comment.
So Chief Cave is going to bring you a couple of, of cards. Um, if anybody else needs to fill one out, please do so and I'll read the disclaimer. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other, or the audience and are expected to conduct themselves in an inappropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you, Director Rutledge. Uh, Ms. Corliss Turner, uh, our first speaker this evening, come on up, Ms. Turner.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just want to make a comment that on, um, during the military hearing, uh, I appreciate, uh, uh, Chair, uh, Chairman for, uh, encouraging citizens to come out and be a part. On August twenty-third, there was another, um, meeting and Voices for Rockdale, myself, expressed that we were, uh, trying to educate citizens and that we were going to be sending out letters or emails to the department heads. And your comment, and I have the clip, I'll send it to you, in email was that you would fully support us. So on the twenty-seventh, we sent an email to the Planning and Zoning. We sent one to, uh, the assessors and the Tax Commissioner and to the Code Enforcement. They all were welcoming that and said that they would be glad to do the virtual meetings with us. Then on the thirtieth, at six AM in the morning, I got an email from, uh, Jamie Cave, the Chief of Staff, saying that the county was working on something and, um, they're in the process. If we could wait, if we could hold off. Well, we worked on this since July twenty-eighth at our meeting we had at the clubhouse, which I did inform you. And we waited till after the military hearing in order to move forward. So when we started moving forward, you welcomed it, you said that you fully support us. Now, from my understanding, Jamie works for you, right? So I should go back what you say, am I correct? Not his e- email, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then Voices for Rockdale is another vessel to educate, to help work with the county. We have a following that we just had a virtual with the B O E and it was wonderful. And, and the members, you know, received it. So we, we are just another vessel. So my question to you is, are we welcome to have this? Because then we started getting emails from these other three departments that said that they would, would be honored to do it, that this email had also been sent to them. So you don't have to answer now, but we would. Voices for Rockdale would like to request a meeting with you personally, uh, Chairman Oz, so we can send you an email and you can give us some dates that we can meet with you. Is that fine?
I've got good news for you tonight, Ms. Turner, and I'm so glad that you, uh, and I'm talking now so y'all can stop the clock. So Ms. Turner got a few more seconds, thirty-six seconds left on it. But I've got some good news for you. You're absolutely correct. You and Voices for Rockdale have done a fantastic job of putting your collective minds together to bring about questions and concerns. And you guys have been Johnny on the spot in terms of being educated and informed. And you're taking that good information back to the people who, that you're able to influence. What I wanted to make sure, and this was my direction to the Chief of Staff, day-to-day operations, uh, our staff are already loaded with multiple things. So what we want to do in honoring, and honoring your request, is to make sure that we have some form of organizational management. In addition to that, between our Legislative Affairs Director and our Public Relations Department, we're putting together an information session that will inform all of the citizens about what's happening in each and every one of those departments. Now, who starts first? Whether we start first or you all start first, uh, that, um, maybe something we can talk about when you guys come in to meet with me. So I welcome the opportunity. Let me just tell you how that works. Uh, you can come see your chairman, get ahold of Ms. Lee. She's the executive assistant for the chairman. Give her a call. Coordinate y'all's schedule with my schedule and we'll set you up a time where you can come in and then we can work through and map out a good plan that'll be beneficial. And doesn't put a strain on staff, but it also gives the citizens the, the level of attention and information that they need. I think we can work in concert here because I really do appreciate you all coming out, particularly doing the military, but you've been staying on the scene, uh, just like Ms. Williams. You've been still here, you're making sure you gather this. If you notice all evening long, one of the things, and we're going to be doing this continuously going forward. We're going to stop, we're going to make sure all of these directors that are staying here and are coming to these meetings, they come prepared, knowing that at any given moment, the chairman may call them to the microphone to bring clarification, to give education, to give understanding. And sometimes it may not be whether they have a, uh, item on the agenda or not, these acronyms and these terms. So yes, I encourage you to make sure you reach out to Mrs. Lee. And her number, if one of your team members want to write this number down, let me give it to you. I'm going to give it to you slow enough so you can copy it. Give her a call, she's the best. Seven seven zero, six two four. Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm in such a habit of giving my own number. Lord have mercy. Ms. Jackett, that's my number. Hold on, let me give you Ms. Lee's number. I've been giving that number out so long, I just got it in the brain of my head. Let me back up, I stand corrected. Commissioner, did you see that? Here it is, seven seven oh, two seven eight, seven zero zero three. That's Ms. Andra Lee. She serves as the executive assistant to the Office of the Chairman. Here's what she's going to do. She's going to look at our calendar and she's going to coordinate my availability with y'all's availability to come in. And I, I encourage you to bring your team with you so everybody is getting the information all at one time. We have a, I don't call it, we changed the name back in twenty seventeen. They used to call it a conference room, but we don't call it that. We call it the solution room. So we'll welcome you into the solution room, we'll put our heads together, we'll figure out how we can make sure that local HOAs, local churches, local nonprofits who want to engage and be informed about how the county operates, that we can line up with those schedules and bring people out, staff. But we can respectfully coordinate with their schedules. Never intentions that we didn't want to do it, we just have to make sure we coordinate with their schedules and make sure that we do that because we have to manage people. And you, you know about managing people and managing schedules. And particularly if you're talking about asking somebody to be, uh, out after work at six o'clock or seven o'clock at an HOA. We can do that given enough notice and advance time because we have to respect people livelihoods. Our employees are mothers, fathers and husbands and wives. And, uh, they have schedules and stuff too. They can be where we need them to be, but we have to respectfully schedule them accordingly and coordinate and make sure we do that. So, uh, give Ms. Lee a call, let's get on the calendar and let's get it worked out.
Okay.
Okay, you got thirty-six more seconds.
I do want to say that, that those, those three departments did commit to doing it at six o'clock in the evening. They gave us a selection of dates and, and we chose to date, so it was halted. And, um, so we'll speak more about this when we meet with you and you'll be getting an email. Or we'll speak to Ms., tell me her name again.
Ms. Lee, Lee, E, L E E, Lee. And, and you're right, we did put a stop to that so that we can coordinate and collaborate together. That way you get more bang for your buck in terms of how we're doing it. Because we don't want to limit it to just the three departments. We want to make sure we do a complete county-wide education. That's right.
That's what we were doing. We're going to do, we started with those three and then we got the email from, from Cave. And I'm looking at what you said and then I didn't even see you in the chat.
Let, let this serve as good news tonight.
All right.
Okay, we're going to work together, give Ms. Lee a call and we'll make sure we get out there and we could be a part of your effort and your campaign to educate the citizens. Thank you so much.
Just remember, we're another vessel.
We, we need that vessel. We need as many vessels as we can. Thank you so much, Ms. Turner, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Uh, Ms. Jacqueline Reed, Ms. Reed, Jacqueline Reed.
I want to leave all my comments at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, and thank you for coming out and, and investing in our meeting this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, that completes all of our, uh, public comment. Oh, you've got Ms. Williams. We can't leave Ms. Williams out. She's been, she's been diehard all the way. I got it, Chief, thank you, Ms. Williams. Come on up, absolutely.
Okay, so we can go home. Um, so what I want to talk about is the county road, Avalon Parkway. And I know you guys weren't commissioners when this was constructed, uh, maybe twenty years, twenty-one years ago.
And I want you to, so the people who watch in this, they can hear that lovely voice of yours. Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-one years ago. And so what's happening on Avalon Parkway, somewhere there was an arrangement that Avalon Parkway and, and the, the, uh, grass and all of that on Avalon Parkway would be maintained by the community. However, for that area to be treated as common area, we get no, uh, direct benefit from that, from that, from paying our dues and using our dues money to pay for that county road. So Avalon Parkway is used for the schools, it's used for Brentwood, it's used for Westchester Lake. But the homeowners, the three hundred and sixty-five homeowners in, in Old Salem Township are paying for the maintenance of that area. Close to about fifty thousand dollars a year for the past twenty years. So we've been coming and trying to ask, even when Odin was here, and asking for assistance. And so I just want to know, how do we go about getting some relief for the homeowners in Old Salem Township? Because dues are going up because landscaping is going up and it's hard for us to maintain that.
So if I understand you correctly, Ms. Williams, I think that a part of the dues that you've been, uh, collecting in your HOA goes to the maintenance of that common space that's out there that really you think is, is a county road.
Yeah, Avalon Parkway.
Avalon Parkway. Here's a starting point. Uh, Director, uh, Kelly is our, our DOT Director. The first thing, I don't believe in micromanaging, I think this is a good conversation. Uh, after this meeting is concluded, uh, you'll get with Director, uh, Kelly. He is in charge of transportation in Rockdale County. I think there's an opportunity for him to come out and see exactly what you're talking about. He's relatively new to Rockdale, but he can go out to Avalon, see what you're talking about, do an assessment. And once he does an assessment, he's going to bring back a recommendation to this board. Uh, I found it a little unique that a HOA is collecting dues that, and you say this has been going on for twenty-something years? Somebody should have said something long before now, but that's.
You said something to us several times.
Right, I got you. Well, let me just tell you, this administration has been part of what Betty Wright sings about, the cleanup room. We've been a part of the cleanup crew for a long time. We're going to clean this up, we're going to start with Director Kelly. And I think that's from, from, from organizational management and protocol. We're waiting till after the meeting, Director Kelly will communicate with you, will have his team to come out and do a, um, an assessment from a transportation standpoint. And, and if there's a way that we can make this happen, I think we need to do that. Avalon is a county road, no doubt about it.
I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Does that include, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead, Commissioner.
Are you saying that, um, the fifty thousand dollars includes landscaping and streetscaping and lights? What, what all does the, are you all responsible for?
It's, it's annual mowing, edging, uh, picking up trash. Uh, as we grow in Rockdale County, there are more people traveling up and down the road. They're dumping trash out on that street. Uh, and so in order to keep it clean, because there's a lot of people that walk through there, we've been just maintaining it.
Okay, thank you.
I think that we can certainly, uh, once you get with Director Kelly, he'll come back to us with a recommendation. I think we can move forward with that, absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Williams, thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner. Now we're going to move into board comment. And, uh, there's no other Commissioner to start with other than you. So there it is, Commissioner Washington.
Goodness, well, we, it's been a minute. It seems like we, it's been a minute since we sat in this seat, that I sat in this seat. Glad to be back. Um, first thing, we had our annual employee appreciation and it was fabulous. Congratulations, talent management for putting on what, I got there telling, like, KJ and I were running, trying to get on a ride, so he got on maybe two rides, but he had a snow cone, so he was happy. So, um, but, um, it was, it looked like a fabulous event, um, very well planned. And, um, the fact that we got sponsors for it really, really, it is in line with what we're trying to do, you know, moving the, the county forward. So it was a great event, thank you so much. And congratulations to C.G. Baker for being the employee of the year.
Yes, let's get C.G. around, applause. We've got more, more highlight coming for C.G. Uh, his director is here, Director, uh, Morgan is here. But we're going to do a, a, a bigger and a different thing for C.G. coming up here pretty soon. But thank you, Commissioner, absolutely.
No problem. And the next thing is, um, always, uh, have small businesses in mind. So there's a couple of things, um, getting ready to occur. The first thing is that State Representative Doreen Carter and I are co-hosting a, an, an small business forum, and that would be October the eighth at J.P. Carr. Um, we have, once again, um, people from the Small Business Administration. We have, um, other people, angel investors, other people. So it'll be from ten AM to two AM on October the eighth at J.P. Carr. And the East Metro Business Network is one of the sponsors. So, um, please come out and, and find out is all the information that we have on that, with that, um, small business forum. Excited to work with, um, our, one of our state representatives. And she's bringing state resources to Rockdale County. The next thing is that we, I'm still having my big small business, um, forum or, or, um, education series. Our next installment is October the nineteenth. It will be at Costly Mill from six o'clock until we get done. But this installment, we're talking about marketing, how to market your business, how to create a brand, how to, um, establish your brand, uh, how to market your brand. So I'm really excited about, um, our October the nineteenth series. And my last thing is, um, the members of Delta Sigma Theta, along with other members of the Divine Nine, we're holding a voter registration rally. It is in Lythonia, but this chapter services Rockdale County. We're asking, we're, it's nonpartisan. We're asking everybody to come and celebrate your right to vote. Um, it is sponsored by the Stone Mountain Lythonia Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, but they have invited all other Greek organizations to be a part of it. Um, and we want the people to come out, like I said, celebrate your right to vote. It is nonpartisan, um, we want for you all to come, um, and, and understand how precious that right to vote is. That's all I have for right now until you say something to dog my.
Well, here's, here's what I'm going to say.
You ready to go?
Director Rutledge is in need for executive session tonight.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, you got anything else to say before I say what I'm about to say next?
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm good and ready to go.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. Thank you for being a part of this meeting tonight. We appreciate you embracing the new direction of educating and informing our citizens about the different directions that we're heading in and all of the functions of our county government and our various departments. This meeting is adjourned.